I'm American, where at least I know I'm clean. And I won't forget those who died, who gave my right to leave. I'm standing next to you in Denver still today. The great North Carolina love this land. I'm West Virginia, USA.
Online options, homeschool, send your child to school in masks. Now let me quickly share some important data. And let me preface this by saying and making it clear, the death of any child is sad and tragic. I have two myself, but that doesn't change these facts. In the entire state of Ohio, since January of 2020, just eight children out of three million children have died with COVID. In Ohio, the survival rate of children with COVID is 99.995%. In Lake County specifically, zero deaths of children with COVID, zero. In Lake County, since COVID started, just 37 children out of over 50,000 have been hospitalized with COVID. In Lake County, we have a 100% survival rate, less than 1% hospitalization rate. Point of sharing this is to show clearly the fear, outrage, and ridiculous pressure to mask up our kids is not warranted in the least. Data doesn't lie. Despite the fear mongering in the media from our governor and the risk to our children is negligible, virtually nonexistent. Someone wants to wear a mask or mask their child's mind, their choice. That's the parent's decision, the way it should always be. Our rights don't take a backseat to someone else's fear. I know you guys have faced backlash as a result for standing up for us and our right to decide what is best for our children. I always tell my kids, doing what is right isn't always easy. So again, thank you for standing up for us and our right to choose for our children. Please note that many of us have your backs and sincerely appreciate what you're doing and what is right. And from what I hear from across the district, the vast majority of people chose to free their child's face today. And that's all I have. I think this is a testament to 300 signatures of people in the district supporting mask choice for children. My name is Dr. Britmend. I lived in Concord Township, have been currently a resident to Concord Township. And I want to thank the board members for all the hard work that they've been doing. I'd like to thank all the teachers, all the frontline folks that have been, you know, working with people that have had COVID. I'd like to thank everyone for coming out today to talk about what's going on in school. I think a lot of people have a lot of different things. I think what's something that we all agree on is we want our kids at school. We want all of our kids to be able to learn. And I know that there's a lot of misinformation out there. I know there's a lot of changing things going on. People talk about, you know, what's this right, that right? You know, my political party says this, my political party says that. It all comes down to if we want our kids at school. We want our kids to be able to learn. If you look at what's going on in Lake County, you'll actually see that in the first week of school, we had a bunch of kids already being sent home to be quarantined because of COVID. Yes, they may not die, and they may not survive. But for God's sake, let's put masks on our kids because we don't want them to die.
This is not a joke.
This is not a joke.
This is his time to speak. Try to speak. Let me go.
May I please, ladies?
Allow him to speak, please.
All right. I work with LuRazol, and I manage a group of individuals, they're all PhD feminists, and I have been working through the pandemic this entire time. We've managed to be able to keep all of our people safe because we followed the science, we followed masking, and we followed every social protocol we had. It wasn't easy, it wasn't fun, but we did it anyway. And because of that, we've had zero transmission on our campus. And that is something good to say, right? But we've had people that haven't had COVID, and it's because of their personal life. They've gone out and done things that didn't follow science. It's just not the science, guys. You don't like what the government's telling you to do, but you better get out of here. You don't put a seatbelt on. The government told you not to do that. I bet you don't like to get smoked. The government told you not to do that.
Cigarettes are FBI approved.
It might be, but you don't like to smoke. I mean, let's hear some common sense.
Let's read the Constitution.
It is not wrong with that, but it's also our choice to help the head of our kids be able to go to learn. So might be.
Hi, my name is Virginia. I have a son in high school, and in the online learning program, thank you for offering that, I appreciate it. I'm an RN. I worked on COVID patients. I have seen a lot of death this year, and I'm glad you guys don't take this so seriously because I'm tired of watching people die. I urge the board to look at what's happening down south with the pediatric ICU beds that are completely full, and they're sending kids home who cannot breathe because of how much spread is happening, and there are children dying. I am so tired of death this year, but I understand that you're still having misinformation. So I will read to you, hopefully it might change somebody's mind, something from Newsweek. We use Newsweek at school, we use it as a warning tool, right? I'll read it because I can help us with it in most small letters. As for mask mandate violating some of these personal liberties, there is a 115-year-old precedent in 1905, a citizen argued in the Jacobson v. Massachusetts case that a small hospital donation mandate infringed on his rights, so it's a three-fourth of health union's Board of Health authority to require that seen under the 10th Amendment. In every wealth of this population, in every well-run society charged with the duty of conserving the safety of its members, the rights of the individual in respect of his liberty may at times, under the pressure of great dangers, be subject to such restraint to be enforced by reasonable regulations as the safety of the general public may demand. That's the Supreme Court Judge John Castrenkins. And then his rule was quoted. The Constitution states the ability to protect welfare and safety and health of the public, and in the face of a global pandemic, courts have found that mask mandates are justified in measure since mandates also don't prohibit a person from gathering or sharing their opinions, except if the person refuses to wear a mask, it's not a free speech issue. And Jacobson's provides a longstanding precedent that the right to liberty is not without restriction. I would dare you to hold the hand of somebody who's dying from COVID and knows they won't make it, and then have the same opinion about masks that you have right now.
What if they give you a vaccine?
No, anyone trying to argue that we're speaking closely, right?
Please let her finish.
I've seen a lot of deaths here, and I am scared to death that we're going to see any children. We are lucky so far that we haven't had as bad as other states, but as they show themselves, look at the data they saw, they've been holding longer than we have. And they don't have that feeling.
Let them finish.
And there were children dying in ICUs in Dallas, there's no pediatric ICU beds, and for a while it was like 100 mile radius, but it didn't have pediatric ICU beds.
Have you heard of? Let them finish!
I'm RN. You know, I think you're right.
Be focused, full on.
Thank you for your.
Everyone has a few minutes. Everybody has a few minutes. Please have a decent group of people here. Commander, what's your opinion of anybody that's speaking here? If it has courage to come up, let them speak, right? Just let them speak, okay?
And thank you, Mr. Kales. You and I had a conversation a week ago, and he was kind of a conversation with him time for time. I have three kids, school their kids in the same schools. So, you know, and first off, you know, all in related that just was a question, you know, the one thing I would say is that we all have to respect everybody else's opinion, right? I mean, obviously it's very concerning, and I understand that it's concerning to you and this gentleman here. Whoever chooses to wear a mask, that's your right. One thing that you said is you said follow the science, and the science are deviating. Because I could have brought a stack of peer-reviewed studies that say, A, masks provide zero protection from any virus, right? Collection studies that say that there's tiny little holes, and I'm not big man, but this is reality, there's tiny little holes in the mask, that's right. The virus's little particles are 100 times smaller. So let me put it in a different scenario, is I'm going to go build a Love Brown Pool, right? I'm going to go build a Love Brown Pool, but I'm going to build it with a fence. It's got big holes in it. Then I go to water, guess what's going to happen? All the water's pouring out, the mask still doing good. I miss you when you came in yesterday, where the lady talked about the fact that she isn't expert on masks, and doctors, nurses are not experts. She's the one that the hospitals consult. When, and the nurse that spoke before her in the video laid her mask on the desk. Obviously now, who knows how many dropped. My hands have drowned out, I got my hand on the lecture, and, but she laid it, she said, so right there, if I were in the hospital, if I were monitoring people in the hospital, I could have written her up, and she was up there obviously saying that she wore a mask. So at the end of the day, I would just say this, that it's just, if you feel comfortable with your child wearing a mask, then wear a mask. But the one thing I can tell you is this, is that all the studies I read and all the people I listen to that are, you know, supposed experts, kids are going to touch their mask on average during six hours, probably even more than five hundred times. You know, in the Lake County Health Board the other day, my guy gave a, you know, a lecture on how masks can protect you, but at the same time, during hours and minutes, he touched his mask 140 times. So he's breathing in his own germs, and he's also breathing in his own exhalts, which is , that's not good for the kids. I just did wear a mask once last year, you know, all three of them, because they all had exemptions, and they weren't sick, they didn't miss days of school last year. So, thank you.
Hi, my name is Timothy Hickey. My address is 175 Riverside Drive. I'm a Riverside graduate. I'm a United States born veteran, former military. I'm a police officer. I'm a mechanical engineer with a background in data analytics. I do seismic calculations on a daily basis. I wanted, first, I didn't want to speak until I heard a PhD doctor, so for everybody here, I would also like to point out, I'm a RN, Timothy Ryan Hickey. So you want to be called a doctor for a campus that has been shut down for two years and tell me that there is no transmissions at your campus, then feel free, but you will address me as RN as well. Now, I want to talk about the mask efficacy, efficacy, however you say it, this RN. Why can't I go visit my father who is in the hospital without a mask right now? Why can't I go visit him with a mask if masks worked? I can't, and you know that they don't. So the mask efficacy is 12% with your cloth mask, cloth mask. It is 60% with a properly fitted N95 mask, which you are not wearing. It is, when it is not properly fitted, it drops down to 3%. When we talk about masking our children, we are talking about child abuse. Children's bodies are not protected for six hours a day. No human body has went for that. I specifically watched you touch your mask and then put it back on. As an RN, you should know that that is not proper mask wearing. So you are not qualified to give that type of advice. Now you've also mentioned the many, many deaths that you have experienced as an RN here in Lake County. Since COVID has started, there have been 400 deaths here in Lake County. I'm guessing you weren't part of maybe 1% of those who have seen it. Those people are eight years old, we're not talking about eight-year-olds, we're talking about kids. Now I wouldn't dare anybody to challenge the data on the child to adulter transmission of COVID because it doesn't exist. Children are not at risk. I commend this board for giving it as a parental choice. Nobody in this room has any authority to tell me what is best for my child and other enemies. Except for the PhD who definitely fabricated his LuRazol statistics on a campus that was closed down for two years, and an RN who virtue signaled every second that she was up here without hollering her phone mask protocol. If there is ever a mask mandate, make it N95, make it properly fitted. Let's not purchase a call. This isn't fake, like these kids deserve to breathe, and they deserve their freedoms, and I'm not ever going to give that up.
Hello, my name is Michelle Birgitt. I'm a Concord Township resident and a mother of four. Two of my children have graduated, and I have two at Lu middle school. Just a quick story I wanted to let you know about, it was when to wind that part of our mask mandates. And I took my 12-year-old son into this store, and I turned and I looked at him, he has a mask on, and I said, David, take the mask off. He said, no. I said, we don't have to wear it, take it off. His response to me was, I'm more comfortable with it. This is terrible, what this is happening to our kids, psychological abuse. And if you look at the medical terms, and Fauci himself, he does not know in a year from now, what a virus is going to do to our kids mentally. And we're not even talking about the overdoses and the depression in our children, and the suicide rates. In our children. And I just want to thank you, and there's a lot of people standing behind you, for giving us the choice to mask our kids.
Hi, my name is Kathy Gero, and I have three grandchildren in the Riverside School District. And I'm here because I want to personally thank you for your decision to not mandate masks for this new school year. I wholeheartedly stand behind you, I support you, I agree that there should be no mask mandates, but a decision left to the parents, the guardians, whoever is in place to make those decisions. And I would just ask that you please continue to stand firm and to stand strong on this issue. And again, I truly thank you from the bottom of my heart for doing the right thing for our children and our children.
Hello, my name is Daniel Hampton. I've been Concord resident for eight years. I have three children, one in LeMoo's and one in Riverside. I want to thank the opportunity to address the board, to be with everyone tonight. I think everybody knows where I stand with my ass, I think that's pretty obvious. First off, I'd like to come up and say, I worked with Dr. Britmend at LuRazol. I'm a doctor as well, but not a medical doctor. But that man went to school for 10 years, and he worked his ass off to earn that degree. He is a scientist of the highest order, and I respect him, and I respect LuRazol, and we did not close down for two years. Our campus is not closed. I have research and development, worked, I work, I manage in that group. I manage 25 people that work in that group. We have been onsite except for three months where we were mandated to go home. We have worked through the pandemic, we are a successful company. One of the reasons we made it through this pandemic is zero onsite transmission, which is true, is we wore our masks. They do work. One mask doesn't work, two masks work. My management, hey, 80% transmission reduction if you wear both of your masks. Look, everybody has the right to choose what they want to do with their children. I respect that because I respect the parent's right to choose. I respect that. What I worry about is not necessarily the oldest because I think some of the facts are right, children are less likely to become seriously ill. However, the quarantine situation becomes an issue. I've seen this, okay? Other people I know have had this issue. Exposures create, you have to go home, you have to become tested to get a large number of people that are not able to work or go to school. Yes, companies have been affected by this, their operations have hurt. What we will end up with, what I'm afraid of, I will tell you what I am afraid of. I am afraid of remote learning. The kids need to be in the schools to learn. It must be in the school. If we're not careful, this is what I'm afraid of. My kid gets sent home, your kids get sent home, we all go to remote situations. How many parents can take off work to be home with their children to get a good education? It's damn hard. I did it for a year. I just don't want to do it again, okay? I respect your choices, I respect everyone's opinion in this room. I want to say thank you for letting me talk to you, and thank you very much.
My name is Margaret Butler. I live on Taylor Road in the Georgetown Township. My husband and I both attended Riverside, and our two children also graduated from Riverside. I have a different topic that brought you here tonight. I've heard a lot of concern in the community about possible curriculum that is being taught. I don't want to base my knowledge on misinformation or rumors, so that's why I'm bringing this before the board. I believe we are a conservative constituency in the district, and we do not want CRT or the LGTQ. I've been assured that at this time, that does not exist. But again, just like mask wearing, I believe that this is a moral issue that rests with the authority of their parents. The education system is to focus on four subjects, like English, math, and science. And I just ask our administration to be aware of what is being told to our students that is not part of the stated curriculum. So my question is, is there any of this agenda in the curriculum? I've been told no. Is there any of it that is being proposed in future curriculum? Or is this being espoused by many individual teachers in their classrooms? I know the local district where a teacher was teaching this when it was not part of the curriculum. Thankfully, the students went home and reported it to their parents. The administration said they were not aware of it until it was brought to their attention. So I just ask if this administration would guard our students from such harmful material being placed in the curriculum?
Gloria Richards, I have three children, all three of them are Riverside. My last one is senior this year. Also a small business owner, I'm a 1922 Capu and Rouge. I feel I didn't even get to speak tonight, honestly. Can you listen? I want to hear more. I think most of my friends know, and thank you gave her inviting me tonight, that I feel like I'm really good balanced on respect to both opinions. As adults, it's our job to teach the kids, we need to listen, we need to respect, we don't want to be disrespectful. I've seen it over the past year and half, tier of babies hurt, tier of friends hurt, tier of good people hurt, which I think is really sad, you know? Thank you for giving us the opportunity to talk tonight because that's a privilege as well. And, you know, we had a bad experience last year at the high school. You know, my son has asthma, he wore his mask, you know, and he got pulled in by the principal, and he got a phone call to us. And it wasn't a great conversation, but you know, we dealt with it, even though we don't believe he needs to wear a mask, we dealt with it. You know, and I talked to him, and I said, you know, you have to respect both sides, teachers, faculty, it's a branding thing, they're dealing with things that are branding to them, and dealing with situations they're trying to figure out as well. Parents, we're trying to deal with protecting our children, and doing what we feel is right for our family. It was in a bad situation, we're over it, we're onto it here. Do I want him to wear a mask? Absolutely not. But do I also feel like Westwood Riverside had things in place? They had sanitizers, they had, you know, things in place to help the kids, to do whatever they can. Could our situation have been a little better in that particular one? Yeah, it could have, period. But you know, it is torn people apart, and I think that's the point that I wanted to make tonight, because I think everybody truly sometimes just needs to take a step back and take a breath and see what you're doing. And, you know, just think, you know, outside of the school with masks, did I have to deal with it in my business? 100% absolutely. Did I have to enforce it? I did not. Did I have people yelling and screaming at me, being rude? 100%. Did I have them being rude to my guest? 100%. What did I do then? Please leave. You know, whatever your opinion is, you got to be respectful. Is it hard for the schools to continue? Absolutely. Is it hard for me as a small business? Do I know if I'm even going to make it through this year again? I have no idea. But I will do everything in my power to protect my children, to protect my families, to protect my friends that support me, and to protect my business. But I will always do it respectfully, yeah. So, you know, I hope everybody can get that way too a little bit. Do you deserve to share your opinion and be of the tune? Absolutely. And that one also I wrote through about, is being able to be heard. So, thank you.
Hello, everybody. Debbie Strappa, New York Township resident. My daughter is in fifth grade, just started today at Hawkeye Elementary. She's 10 years old. My papa, or Ben Strappa, is a teacher here at that, John R., I guess. I've been here for a couple of 20 years. I'm here to speak about my daughter. She was scheduled to go back to school today with no masks. Last year, when online learning started, her grades declined because her attention declined. It was rough. I could not stay at home. I was a full-time employee at the clinic, and I couldn't go home to be with her. So I had to have my grandmother help. My grandmother wants to help monitor their grandchild and make sure their learning, she couldn't, she worked third shift, so she couldn't sleep. So it's very imperative that they be at school. Her grades declined. Hopefully this year, they'll be better. And then I was, I don't know, I had contracted COVID in July. She was with me since I had gotten it, and did not get any symptoms, any signs, or contracted. Neither did my significant other, who was with me since the day I had gotten it. So you tell me, how does it contract to, from one person to another? His aunt was admitted with COVID, but died with pneumonia outcome. Very unfortunate. I've had overdose, found overdose from depression, my brother's girlfriend, and now my brother has gone down to school for his stroke because of it. I can all agree, it's been a rough year and a half. Masks, yes. You want your child to wear them, fine, that's their decision, their decision. My daughter, we can wait to get that thing off of her. Last year, she was almost suspended the week prior to the end of school for not wearing a mask for five minutes. Called to the principal's office and threatened with a suspension. Ridiculous. Then they get sent home for 10 days. Are they learning? The PCR tests are not accurate to decipher whether it's flu or COVID. That is already known. So the results of COVID positive tests should not be upheld. If the child is sick and they couldn't stay home, do they have to be sent home for 10 days? No. My symptoms went away. My symptoms went away after two days. Two days. Not a nurse, not a doctor, but I've been around plenty of people who have had it and their symptoms are dull. Some people get worse because of terminal pneumonia and they should be treated with medication, but they're not. They didn't give me anything. Nothing. They treated it as the flu and I asked many nurses, you're gonna treat it like the flu? Yes. That's all I got to say. No masks, thank you.
Hi, my name is Sharon Shusey and I had two children that graduated from here, 2012 and 2014. Um, I just, when this whole thing started the past spring, I mean, I was one of the people that was home with the mask and didn't see my family and scared of everything. And, uh, I just, I don't know, after, now I'm learning so much more about what's been going on this past year and it's not about, I mean, it's turning to the mask versus the unmasked, the vaccinated versus the vaccinated. And now the unvaccinated are being blamed for spreading or making this variant, which is likely untrue. I've looked at, I've, I'm not hurt, I mean, I do have a bachelor's degree in business, but I don't, I've read so much and these doctors are being silenced, these scientists are being silenced, virologists, epidemiologists, I mean, there's just been silence from all over the world and treatments are being silenced. They're treating COVID people. Well, first of all, you don't even know if they have COVID because probably the test isn't accurate, but they're treating them, they're hiding treatments. They're hiding ivermectin and they're making it impossible again. They're hiding hydroxychloroquine. And my husband went online when he was sick three weeks ago. I don't know if he had COVID, we didn't get tested. And we got the medicine, ivermectin, and we followed supplements in that. It was myfreedoctor.com, but there's all kinds of doctors. There's America's frontline doctors, there's FLCCC Alliance that are treating people, that are saving people, that are keeping them out of the hospital. Start looking at, the people started, why are we being hid? Why are the, why are they suppressing all this information on these treatments? They want everyone to be vaccinated. I'm, I don't know, conspiracy theorists, but I guess they are. But I just, I just can't believe what's going on and how plain it is to see and I don't see, maybe my brothers have been vaccinated, my mom's been vaccinated and she's even aware of everything going on and I don't know why she got vaccinated. I'm worried about her, but my brother just got COVID and is hopefully recuperating from it, but he wouldn't call the myfreedoctor.com. But anyway, my husband got better, don't know if he had COVID. I had a problem even getting my, his ivermectin at the pharmacy because, you know, that's gonna be outlawed. My gosh, we gotta give him remdesivir, which actually, I was looking the other night, and it might cause kidney damage. I think, I, the only treatment Fauci has said that was okay in the hospital was remdesivir. And they've killed these people. I, I just, I don't know. I've never been passionate about anything. I mean, I may have, but I never come before. I don't mean that, but something to take a stand and I just, I mean, God bless us. I'm so glad we settled.
Hi, I'm Julie C. John. I live in Pink Hill Township. I have three children, uh, my daughter's a freshman at Riverside and two boys, um, who are going into third grade. I am not a Pink Hill Township trustee. I didn't bring a 30-person posse. I'm going up against a very tough crowd here, but I came up here and I'm speaking and advocating for what I believe in strongly and that is protecting our children. And I think that it's, um, very well-known, the first line of defense against this virus. I mean, there's still a lot that we don't know. The first line of defense is the vaccine. I got it for my daughter who's 14, got it for myself. My significant other has it. We, we're fully vaccinated, we, we go to work, we're mandated, we're masks at work. It feels extremely wrong to me to have children under 12 who are not eligible for the vaccine, to have to send them to school unmasked, completely unprotected. We see what's going on from one school to the next of, I mean, look at Willi Eastlake was open for two more days. They had 25 cases, 82 students quarantined. Um, I think in this room, I think the only thing we can really come to agree on is that we want our kids in school. My kids went home for a year and a half homeschool. I don't know how that's gonna do to sustain all this thing. It's twice as contagious. One person can infect up to eight. It is, to me, not rocket science that, yes, this mask is not going to eradicate completely, absolutely not, but it will lessen, it will mitigate. My children are the most important thing in my world, so obviously I want to do absolutely everything I can to protect them. The issue with this virus is that you just do not know how it's gonna manifest. You could be completely asymptomatic, you could be unventilated, you just don't know how it's gonna manifest. So, I mean, I guess, I know that this is a forum here, but I guess my big question is this like, I don't know if you can address it later, but would you guys ever impose a mask mandate or is it like so extreme that you just have a will? And, you know, I guess what I don't understand, Pink Hill City has, um, a mask mandate and taking all those precautions. And some of these schools have the air filtration systems, men are in, Willi Eastlake have reversed their stance for right near that. They're, they're getting the same information as, as our board is from the Lake County Health Department. So I'm just wondering what it's gonna take, um, because this is, it's just, it doesn't feel right saying our kids being just really unprotected against this virus. At least, you know, do what Sugar and Fowles and Sol and I believe is are doing is, at least mask the kids until the vaccine is available, hopefully. And unfortunately, that's not how this works. My people wear a mask, let it go. Um, I wish I could have the luxury of doing that, but I will lose my job. So it's not that. I actually did look into sending my kids to cancer. But it's not an option. Oh my gosh, I just, I can't even deal with this person totally, honestly.